Good evening. I'd like to call to order September 28, 2015, meeting of Dover City Council. Please rise for the invocation by Reverend Theodore Anderson, followed by the pledge to our nation's flag led by Councilman Scott Cole.
Let us pray. Father, we've all been very much encouraged by His eminent Pope Francis, who visited our country and who appealed to all Americans and all people of all faiths, who appeared before a fractious Congress and talked about the value of all of the citizens, as well as emphasizing the golden rule, who appeared before the United Nations, dear God, and stressed the importance of preserving peace, as well as taking care of the precious earth that you have given us with, and finally, who appeared before the city of love, brotherly love, Philadelphia, and stressed the importance of family in all life. We pray, dear God, that you will bless this council with the same sort of universal wisdom to do unto others as you would have them do unto you, to eschew partisanship, to do what's best for our city, for our citizens, both old and new, as well as for this precious land, air, and sea that you've entrusted us with. Let each decision that we make, and let each one of us know that we are indeed all family, all Americans, all members of this wonderful community, that we want to improve and welcome all citizens. Bless this council. In your name we pray. Amen.
.......................................
Gentlemen, you have before you this evening's agenda. Are there any additions or deletions to the agenda?
Mr. President, I move that we approve the regular council meeting agenda as presented.
Second. Been moved by Councilman Hutchinson and seconded by Councilman Hare to approve the agenda as presented. Is there any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Now we have before us the consent agenda. Those items on the council agenda which are considered routine and non-controversial are marked with an asterisk and will be acted upon by a single roll call of the council. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a member of council so requests, in which event the matter shall be removed from the consent agenda and considered a separate item. What is the pleasure of council?
To accept the consent agenda.
Second. Been moved by Councilman Hare and seconded by Councilman Lewis to accept the consent agenda. Any further discussion? Madam Clerk, please follow the roll.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Sutler?
Yes.
Mr. Neal?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Hosfeld?
Yes.
Mr. Hare?
Yes.
Mr. Hutchison?
Yes.
Yes. Motion carries nine zero. Item 1C are the adoption of the minutes of the special council meeting of September 16, 2015. What is the pleasure of council?
I move to adopt.
Minutes. Been moved by Councilman Neal and seconded by Councilman Lewis. Is there any further discussion? Madam Clerk, please follow the roll.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Sutler?
Yes.
Mr. Neal?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Hosfeld?
Yes.
Mr. Hare?
Yes.
Mr. Hutchison?
Yes.
Yes. Motion carries nine zero. Item 2A is a proclamation for Cyber Security Awareness Month. In the absence of Mayor Christensen this evening, I would ask Councilman David Anderson if he would join Andy Siegel of the city's IT department at the podium and request the city clerk to read the proclamation into the record.
Whereas, we recognize the vital role that technology has in our daily lives and in the future of the city of Dover, whereby today many citizens, schools, libraries, businesses, and other organizations use the Internet for a variety of tasks, including keeping in contact with family and friends, managing personal finances, performing research, enhancing education, and conducting business. And whereas, critical sectors are increasingly reliant on information systems to support financial services, energy, telecommunications, transportation, utility, health care, and emergency response systems. And whereas, Internet users and our information infrastructure face increasing threats of malicious cyber attack, invasion of privacy from spyware and adware, and significant financial and personal privacy loss due to identity theft and fraud. And whereas, the Stop, Think, Connect campaign is aimed at increasing the understanding of cyber threats and empowering the public to be safer and more secure online. Maintaining the security of cyberspace is a shared responsibility in which each of us has a critical role, and awareness of computer security essentials will improve the security of the city of Dover information, infrastructure, and autonomy. Now therefore, I, Robin R. Christensen, Mayor of the city of Dover, Delaware, do hereby proclaim October 2015 as Cyber Security Awareness Month in the city of Dover and urge all citizens to learn about cybersecurity and put that knowledge into practice.
Councilman Anderson.
Thank you. And I'd like to yield to Mr. Siegel and want to congratulate your team for bringing this important issue to our awareness.
Cybersecurity is something that's not just for IT people, but for everybody. Just want to impart this little pearl of knowledge. Passwords are like underwear. You should not leave them out in the open where people can see. They should change them frequently, and by all means, never share them with anyone.
Thank you, Mr. Siegel. Thank you, Councilman Anderson. Item 2B is a proclamation for Fire Prevention Week. I would ask Councilman Brian Lewis if he would come to the podium and be joined by Assistant Chief Plan Witt and Captain in Charge of Fire Prevention of the Dover Fire Department. Mrs. McDowell, would you please read the proclamation?
Whereas, the city of Dover is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those living in and visiting our city, and fire is a serious public safety concern both locally and nationally. And whereas, in 2013, fire departments in the United States responded to an estimated 370,000 home structure fires, which resulted in 12,200 injuries, 2,755 deaths, and $7 billion in damages. And whereas, half of home fire deaths result from fires reported between 11:00 p.m. and 7:00 a.m., when most people are asleep. Only one in five home fires were reported during these hours. And whereas, working smoke alarms cut the risk of dying in reported home fires in half. When smoke alarms fail to operate, it is usually because batteries are missing, disconnected, or dead. And whereas, the 2015 Fire Prevention Week theme, "Hear the Beep Where You Sleep," effectively serves to remind us about the importance that every bedroom needs a working smoke alarm. Now therefore, I, Robin R. Christensen, Mayor of the city of Dover, Delaware, do hereby proclaim October 4th through 10th, 2015, as Fire Prevention Week in the city of Dover, and urge all residents to make sure their smoke alarms are working properly and to support the many public safety activities and efforts of fire and emergency personnel.
Thank you, Mrs. McDowell. Councilman Lewis.
Chief, it's an honor and pleasure for me to present you with this proclamation. Captain?
Gentlemen, I'd like to say a few words.
Do you have any words to say?
Fire prevention is pretty important, especially in the city. Our agenda for that week is to visit the schools during the week, and we're all ended on Saturday with open house down at Legislative Mall from 10:00 to 4:00. So if anybody's willing to come down, visit us on Saturday, see what it's all about.
Thank you, gentlemen. Item 2C is a proclamation for National Community Planning Month. I'd ask Mrs. Townsend to join Councilman Scott Cole. I would ask the city clerk to please read the proclamation into the record.
Whereas, in every community, change is constant and affects all of us. However, community planning and plans can help manage this change in a way that provides better choices for how people work and live. And whereas, community planning provides an opportunity for all residents to be involved in making choices that determine the future of their community. The full benefits of planning requires public officials and citizens who understand, support, and demand excellence in planning and plan implementation. And whereas, the American Planning Association and its professional institute, the American Institute of Certified Planners, endorse National Community Planning Month as an opportunity to highlight the contributions sound planning and plan implementation make to the quality of our communities and environment. And whereas, the celebration of National Community Planning Month gives us the opportunity to publicly recognize the participation and dedication of the members of the city of Dover Planning Commission and other citizen planners who have contributed their time and expertise to the improvement of the city of Dover. Now therefore, I, Robin R. Christensen, Mayor of the city of Dover, Delaware, do hereby proclaim the month of October 2015 as National Community Planning Month in the city of Dover, and encourage all citizens to recognize this year's theme, Healthy Communities, Healthy People, and support the valuable contributions made by community and regional planners and our partner agencies at the state and county level, and extend our heartfelt thanks for the continued commitment to public service by these professions.
Just wanted to say thank you for the members of the city planning commission, yourself, for making Dover or trying to make Dover one of the best places that we can live.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Mrs. Townsend, would you like to say a few words?
But of course.
A few words?
I do want to say that National Community Planning Month is more about recognizing the contributions of the many volunteer citizen planners that make our plans work. And in Dover, in addition to the Planning Commission, Historic District Commission, and Board of Adjustment, we're really fortunate to have a number of groups, and I'm again going to highlight the Restoring Central Dover Team, because we really have a core group of committed volunteers from across all disciplines and segments of the society that are working to make Dover the best it can be. And, you know, I just want to thank everybody who's been a part of that. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Townsend. Item 2D is a proclamation for Halloween Trick or Treat. I would request the city clerk to read the proclamation into the record.
Whereas, the children of the city of Dover enjoy the fun and festivities associated with the observance of the Halloween Trick or Treat custom of traveling with friends and family, going from door to door in their neighborhood, displaying their costumes, and gathering treats. And whereas, parents are urged to join in the festivities by accompanying their children throughout their journeys and celebrating Halloween Trick or Treat. And whereas, residents are requested to indicate their willingness to welcome children by keeping their porch or exterior lights on, and that youngsters call only on homes which are lighted. And whereas, the mayor of the city of Dover has deemed it advisable to observe the celebration of Halloween Trick or Treat on Saturday, October 31, 2015, between the hours of 6:00 p.m. and 8:00 p.m. Now therefore, I, Robin R. Christensen, Mayor of the city of Dover, Delaware, do hereby proclaim that the Halloween Trick or Treat observance be held on the 31st day of October, 2015, between the hours of 6:00 p.m. and 8:00 p.m. in the city of Dover, and urge all residents, both young and old, to make this a happy and safe occasion for our children.
Thank you, Mrs. McDowell. Item number three is Resolution Number 2015-14 in support of Delaware Land and Water Conservation Trust Fund Park Grant Application for the Mallard Pond Playground. I request Mrs. Townsend to brief council on this item.
Thank you. This is a resolution that is, that needs to accompany a grant application that has been submitted to Denrec. It will be reviewed in November. We had budgeted $66,000 for the fiscal year to install playground equipment at Mallard Pond Park, and it is, we are submitting for a matching grant. So we are requesting, I think, once we got the final estimate, it was just under $32,000. So there, it's actually a little bit under budget, but we do need a resolution from city council to go to Denrec with that application. So, thank you.
Questions for Mrs. Townsend? What is the pleasure of council? Councilman Hosfeld.
Move to accept staff's recommendations in regard to the park grant application for Mallard Pond Playground.
Second. Sorry, that was seconded by Councilman Cole. Motion was made by Councilman Hosfeld, seconded by Councilman Cole. Is there any further discussion?
Yes.
Councilman Anderson, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to say that, wanted to thank the staff for working to seek out grants. I would just want the taxpayers to know that the staff does value their money, and the staff is working hard to keep costs down, and I want to congratulate them on that.
Thank you, Councilman Anderson. Other comments? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Sutler?
Yes.
Mr. Neal?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Hosfeld?
Yes.
Mr. Hare?
Yes.
Mr. Hutchison?
Yes.
Yes. Motion passes nine zero. We have now before us item 6A, Critical Repairs to the U.S. 13 East Pump Station Number Seven Sole Source Bender. Mr. Koenig, would you please brief us on this matter?
I thank you, Council President Slaven. In the packet tonight is an action form and support documentation out of the Department of Public Works related to the U.S. 13 East Sanitary Sewer Pump Station, also known as Pump Station Number Seven. And earlier this summer, on July 7, the PLC, which is the Programmable Logic Controller, failed at this pump station, and the failure made all of the wastewater pumps inoperable using the computer. Temporary bypass pumping was installed, and also a bypass around the PLC has been installed so that we can maintain operations at the station. However, under the current conditions, only two of the three pumps are available at the same time until the permanent repairs are completed. Staff evaluated two options, the first being a repair to the existing PLC. However, this would replace or repair the original PLC to the station, which is now considered out of date by industry standards, and a software upgrade would have created a unique situation with respect to all of our other pump stations. The software platform and programming would have been different than our other pump stations at this point. That was option one. Option two was to completely replace the existing PLC with an up-to-date software package that mimics the other pump stations in our inventory, and we would get the same, we would get new warranties for the new PLC. After staff discussion, we considered option one not really feasible and not a good investment of money. In either case, this is a sole source purchase. However, staff is recommending option number two, so that we get the benefit of upgraded software, all warranties associated with the new PLC, and proceeding with the sole source procurement. Procurement, under the purchasing policy, we would recommend the PLC at U.S. 13 East Pump Station be purchased through Freemire and Associates, using the sole source dealer for the BielerTech control system required for the station. And the estimated repair is $96,880. This expenditure would be funded by transferring money currently earmarked for inflow infiltration in the capital plan to cover the cost of this critical repair to pump station number seven. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions for Mr. Koenig. Councilman Neal.
We certainly are going to be criticized that we don't ask, so I'm going to ask. What would be, on option number one, what would that cost have been even though it is not terribly satisfactory?
I did not bring that to me with me tonight, Mr. Neal. I think it was considerably less, probably in the neighborhood of 50% less, but it doesn't get us to current standards, and it could very well be wasted money if it fails going into the future for simply a repair.
Thank you, sir.
Councilman Lewis, and then Councilman Neal.
So, Mr. Koenig, would you say then, if we were to go with option one, it would be considered a quick fix?
I would say it would be a quick fix and not a beneficial fix in the long run, because there would not be warranties associated with that repair.
Councilman Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Koenig, I, just a quick question. We have money set aside for repairs, you know, like, for, I mean, is there a reason we need to transfer from the INR monies?
Yeah, the repairs that we typically have in the budget are in the operating budget and are less than $25,000. So because this is a more than $25,000 purchase, it falls into the capital upgrade area and would need to be funded out of the capital plan. So that's why we're proposing to alter money between projects in the capital plan so that we don't create an imbalance in the budget. We don't have enough money essentially in the operating budget to transfer to the capital budget.
Makes sense. What's the, so what's the effect on the INR projects? What's the effect of this?
I didn't bring the number, but I think the FY '16 appropriation for inflow infiltration was somewhere between $750,000 and $1 million. So it reduces it roughly 10 to 12%, which is not a huge reduction. And this pump station is absolutely necessary to the commercial district on 13, as well as the system in general, because it handles flow from Dover International Speedway and all of the U.S. 13 commercial corridors. So, in the prioritization, this is important. We'd like to get the station repaired permanently, and we'll have to adjust the plan, the capital plan, to move the INI projects forward.
Thank you. It's no question that this cannot be kept on a temporary basis forever. Thank you. Wanted to find out exactly where we're going, what we're losing, what's being shifted. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilman Anderson. Other comments or questions for Mr. Koenig? What is the pleasure of council?
I move acceptance of the recommendation by the staff.
Second.
Been moved by Councilman Neal and seconded by Councilman Anderson to accept the recommendation of staff. Is there any further discussion? Roll call, please, Mrs. McDowell.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Sutler?
Yes.
Mr. Neal?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Hosfeld?
Yes.
Mr. Hare?
Yes.
Mr. Hutchison?
Yes.
Yes. Motion passes nine zero. Item 6B, Critical Repairs to the Van Sant Exhaust Plenum. This item was considered during the Utility Committee meeting earlier this evening. I would request Councilman Hutchison to brief us on this item.
Thank you, Mr. President. Utility committee met at 5:00 p.m. this evening, and one of the items was the Van Sant Exhaust Plenum. And with that, I'll turn to our city manager for an update.
Thank you, Councilman Hutchison. This is an action form coming out of the Electric Department Power Plant with respect to the Van Sant combustion turbine. This turbine has been in operation since 1991, and it has become apparent recently that the exhaust plenum transition piece and expansion joint has degraded over time and now requires replacement. We discussed this issue at the tonight's Utility Committee meeting. One of the items that came up is, why hasn't this repair not been more apparent in recent months? We are just now finishing up what was called a wet compression expansion of the CT, the combustion turbine. And as they were doing the testing from that expansion and upgrade, it became apparent that we were having difficulty with the exhaust plenum. There were some repairs that were made in the fall of 2014 and earlier in the summer of 2015, and what is happening currently is, the plenum walls, which is essentially the exhaust system of the combustion turbine, is allowing heat to transfer into the other components of the CT, which is potentially causing damage to the igniters, the flame scanners, and associated control wiring instruments. And in the long run, this could significantly affect the reliability and availability of this unit. As we indicated, we are in what is called, what I'm calling, the active management of the system, and as we move forward, the reliability and the ability to bring these units online in a defined timeframe is becoming more critical and is playing more on a day-to-day basis into our financial planning and our revenues associated with the utilities. For that reason, it's necessary to move forward with the critical repairs of this, the plenum and the additional pieces. We are currently on outage, and we're trying to get all of these repairs done before the operational period, or the PJM operational capacity performance period, which begins early 2016, 2017. The request for proposals for this repair has gone out and was advertised by NACE. They received proposals late last week and are currently evaluating the best proposal to move forward, but we are anticipating that this repair will cost somewhere between $403,000 and the requested amount of transfer of $469,000. This is similar on the capital plan to the last critical repair. What we are requesting is, is that we're going to forego a capital project known as the Unit Three Cooling Water Line Inspection and Repair. At this time, fund the replacements to the plenum and transition piece so that we can have the CT unit back online for, as we said, the operational period, which begins in the spring. And then, one of the discussions at the Utility Committee meeting tonight was, should we really be deferring the Unit Three Cooling Water Line Inspection? We're going to go back and review that to see if that is the project that we should in the list of projects defer. If that is not the case, we'll come back with a re-prioritized list for the power plant, but we absolutely must move forward with the plenum replacement at the Van Sant CT Station as quickly as possible so that we can get that asset back online in the springtime. So, the request coming out of the Utility Committee is to allow staff to complete the final review of the bid documentation, select the contractor, and move forward with a project that's currently estimated somewhere between $403,000 and $469,000. We would reshuffle the capital plan in accordance with that alteration to the capital budget, and if we are going to shuffle outside of the Unit Three Cooling Water project, we would bring that back to council at a later date. But tonight's request is that after review of the proposals that But tonight's request is that after review of the proposals, that staff be authorized to move forward with the repairs immediately, so that could be as quickly as tomorrow, authorizing the repairs to the CT so that we could have it back online as we indicated. I'd be happy to answer any questions. I also have with me Harry Maloney, the electric director, and Mr. Don Mortis, who is the NACE plant manager under contract for us to operate both the McKee Run facility and the Van Sant facility.
Thank you, Mr. Koenig. Any questions for Mr. Koenig? What is the pleasure of counsel?
I move to, to forward this change in the budget to take care of the Van Sant plenum, exhaust plenum.
Second. Been moved by Councilman Neal and seconded by Councilman Hutchinson to, I believe, accept staff recommendation on this. Is that correct? Is that correct, the motion, accept staff recommendation?
Yes, the staff recommendation, yes.
Any further?
And the staff recommendation.
Any further discussion of the item? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Sutler?
Yes.
Mr. Neal?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Hosfeld?
Yes.
Mr. Hare?
Yes.
Mr. Hutchinson?
Yes.
Yes, motion passes nine zero. Item number seven is Council Member Announcements. I want to refresh everyone's memory of what we heard earlier this morning, this evening, Assistant Chief. The open house will be Saturday on Legislative Mall?
Yes.
From 10:00 AM until 4:00 PM?
Yes.
Encourage many citizens as possible to come out and spend some time with their local fire department. Related, happy birthday to Councilman Hosfeld, who celebrated a birthday this past Friday, and a perfectly on-time birthday wish to Councilman Sutler, whose birthday is today.
Thank you.
Happy birthday to both of you. I polled the rest of them, and our gift to you is that none of us are going to sing for you. Councilman Sutler?
Quick question, not question, but a quick statement. I just wanted to thank everyone who participated in the Oktoberfest this Saturday. It was really amazing to see everyone come together and enjoy themselves without any kind of incident. I spoke to a few state representatives, and they said they'd be willing to support the city's efforts to continue those type of activities and events in the city in the near future. They thought it was a really great thing that we approved that and hosted that. So I wanted to say thank you to everyone, and I hope that we will continue to have more events that bring us together. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Mr. Koenig, you had something?
I did. I just wanted to say thank you related to the downtown cleanup that was conducted several weeks ago. There were a number of council members that showed up. There was a number of staff members that showed up, and we had a significant participation from the community and some of the area community organizations, churches. I think it gave staff members an excellent opportunity to get out in the community and see what types of things are happening on the street, to visit parts of the community that they may not necessarily see very often in their jobs while working in either City Hall or 5 East Street Street. And I think it was a very productive day, and I would like to say thank you to all the staff members and council and community members that participated in that event. Thank you on behalf of the city manager's office, including my staff.
Nicole?
Thank you.
No, no, I was just going to echo those comments.
Councilman Neal?
This is really more of an inquiry. I heard rumors that the Oktoberfest had talent scouts from Dancing With The Stars that have offered a position for next season for the mayor and Councilman Sutler. Does anyone know if there's any truth to that?
We can put it on a future agenda if you'd like.
I shall.
There are no further announcements. I'll entertain a motion for us to go into executive session, a special council meeting. Excuse me, to discuss legal matters.
So move.
Moved by Councilman Hosfeld, seconded by Councilman Neal. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, and we will go into a special council meeting.